I call the regular city council meeting for July 28th to order. And would Ms. Bruins lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise. Enjoy me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton.
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Today's meeting will play on Tuesday, August 2nd at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Okay, next item, please.
Next, we have approval of agenda.
Sir, move. Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Daniels, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Next item.
Next, we have comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, pick us off.
Okay, not too much, just actually some future items. Tuesday coming up is National Night Out. Very good opportunity to get out in your neighborhoods and meet some of your neighbors and maybe see some of our police officers and stuff like that. I think if you go on the website, our website, I believe, you might find some areas to go and do that. A lot of the neighborhood associations are putting some stuff on. And on the 9th, which is, I believe, Tuesday, is the Citrus Heights Chamber Luncheon. If you've never been to one, it's a great opportunity because our esteemed chief will be speaking, I believe, at that one. And we all know he's always very exciting and somewhat funny at times. So a good opportunity, if you've never been to a chamber lunch, to go do that. And you could probably go to the Citrus Heights Chamber website and find a way to do that. And then, we've all been waiting for this, on August 8th, which will be Monday, I believe, at 11:00 AM. The former Pizza, what was it, the, on Sunrise? Oh, gosh. Rev, Pizza Rev. It's finally reopening as the Folsom Palace Asian Bistro. And it's supposed to be a very nice place, so get your family out there and buy some food, support local business, and help Citrus Heights thrive. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Bruins?
I have had no meetings since our last council meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Oh. Mr. Miller?
I got a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor. Monday, attended the Regional Transit Board Meeting. And pretty typical, regular business. And we did have one item, which was an emergency, required four fifths of the Board to approve authorizing a repair to a damaged electrical pole. They're just holding it together with duct tape right now, so I think that was a good thing. Wednesday, a rather lengthy Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. It's going pretty quickly. The Board did approve putting the Citizens Transportation Initiative, which includes roads and transit, onto the ballot. So we approved that, but it's citizens' initiative, so therefore, I think it only takes 50% plus one to pass. But then the more contentious issue was a memorandum of understanding between SAICOG and STA. I disagreed with the Board and voted against it, but it did pass. And so that's all I really have to report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, while I didn't have any library board meetings, I did have a, it was the Friday right after the last council meeting, I had a phone call late in the evening on Friday from Patelco Credit Union. They were planning a relocation, and they were already in the process of a relocation from their current location over to Birdcage. They were having some difficulty getting a fire inspection in time for their opening that following Thursday. I will say, I am incredibly proud of our team. We got it together. And we, sorry, we made it happen for them. So I'm really proud of that. We worked with Sacramento Fire, and they got open, I think it was just a day late, but it was really impressive that our team pulled it together. Thank you, Casey, and Casey Campanar, and Greg Anderson, and the folks over at Sacramento Fire. Very pleased with the action. And thank you very much, City Manager Feeney, great job. So, on that same note, today, well, Sunday, will be City Manager Feeney's six-month anniversary with the city. I will say that I am more than impressed with his performance at this point. He has done a pretty amazing job, started really getting the ball rolling with our strategic planning and getting the beautification crew kind of going and just moving the city very, very quickly into a super positive direction, something that I'm incredibly proud of. So thank you, City Manager. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and definitely privileged to work with such a great team, so a big part of it.
And with that, that's all I had.
Thank you. And thank you all, council members, for taking over while I've been absent. I've been very busy. As Councilmember Miller said, we, SAICOG, actually approved the MOU and sent it over to STA, which it went through. But the biggest thing we have to talk about today is CalCities. And I went to the league Board of Directors meeting, and good news, we'll start with that, $180 million in the state budget for SB 1383 Organics Recycling, the league lobby to make sure we could have that funding to help us cover some of the costs with the unfunded mandate. So we're very proud of that.
Good job.
Thank you. CalCities' Board of Directors unfortunately voted to remain neutral on Proposition 26, which is the California Sports Wagering Regulation and Unlawful Enforcement Act. Our council passed a resolution to oppose Prop 26 as it would negatively affect our card room. And the Board did vote to oppose Proposition 27, which would legalize online sports betting under the guise of adding into homeless funding to the state general fund. We did vote to oppose that, mostly because it lacked the proper enforcement mechanisms, and it created an unlevel playing field for our card rooms. So I'm proud that that actually did get in opposition. And with that, next item.
Next item, we have public comment. Members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please either complete a speaker identification sheet and give it to the city clerk. If participating via Zoom, you can use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to unmute and indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, the city clerk will allow you to unmute your microphone and speak. And I see no raised hands on Zoom, and we do have one speaker identification sheet.
Ms. Kathy Morris, if you could come up?
Already mentioned this evening, I know you don't need any reminders, but I'm going to do it anyway, National Night Out on Tuesday. Chason and Sunrise, Ryan Charsev, are working on C-VRC, and we're looking forward to seeing you and about 400 or 500 other people. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Next item?
Next, we have consent calendar, items four and five.
You have approval?
Motion by Daniels?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Next item, please?
Next, we have regular calendar, item number six. The subject is approval of the Utilization of Economic Development Support Fund for Agreement with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Vice Mayor Schaefer, and members of City Council. I am Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director for the City of Citrus Heights. Our first agenda item to consider this evening is the utilization of our Economic Development Support Fund. Let's get our bearings here for a sec. Okay, Hailey?
Yeah.
Do me a slideshow. Thank you. Okay, one more time. That first item for us this evening is consideration to use our Economic Development Support Fund for our annual Greater Sacramento Economic Council membership. This is an item that you have considered and approved annually since 2015. And we'll go through some information on our Economic Development Support Fund, our GSEC partnership, and then invite Scott Powell, Executive Vice President with GSEC, to share all about the exciting things that they have going on. So to start, as a reminder, our Economic Development Support Fund provides grants and sponsorships to businesses, business associations, and economic development-related organizations for economic development-related activities to advance core economic development-related goals, including increasing job base, tax base, attracting new shoppers, promoting a specific commercial area of the city, and improving the perception and practice of the city as business-friendly. Greater Sacramento Economic Council is the Sacramento Region's economic development organization charged with targeted business attraction, building resilient and effective industry clusters for Sacramento that can look like medical, technology, research and development, advanced manufacturing, et cetera, and also diversifying and strengthening our regional economy. Our partnership with GSEC, I'm happy to report, is very strong and very integrated with the City of Citrus Heights. We have board representation via City Manager Ashley Feeney. I currently lead the Economic Development Director Task Force. We partner frequently on business and development attraction, very important when we consider the revitalization and continued advancement of our commercial corridors, especially Sunrise Tomorrow. GSEC also provides great value in data provision and analysis, as well as market intelligence. And also, something that really can't be discounted when you have integration of our organizations, is the connectivity in multiple categories. Connectivity with the development community, connectivity with our banking and finance community, and connectivity with regional initiatives. So with that, I would like to bring up and introduce Scott Powell, Executive Vice President with Greater Sacramento Economic Council. Scott, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself while I pull up your deck?
Great, Megan, thank you. Mayor, Council, good evening. My name is Scott Powell. As Ms. Huber said, I am the Executive Vice President of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. So got about a 10-minute presentation for you, kind of talking about the work we've done this year and some of the things that we're looking forward on the upcoming year as well. So thank you guys very much for having me out on this warm summer day. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Happy to answer them at the time you have it, or at the end of my presentation, whatever works best for the members here, so.
We're just taking a quick minute. I think we need to sync up screen sharing. Are we okay, Hailey?
Yes.
Let me see what I can do here. It's tough being in two places at once for presentations. Okay.
It looks like we're playing with fire now. But, you know, a couple of things, as Megan said, so, you know, City Manager Feeney, serving on our Board of Directors, and having somebody with his development and economic development experience on a Board of 72 is vitally important, and we appreciate his contribution, you know, to our Board. And then Megan leading our Economic Development Director Task Force, which is all of the community's economic development teams coming together twice a month to talk about how do we continue to advance and grow our region. So, as serving as Chair, as she is winding out her term, she has done an amazing job of not only, you know, running and staffing the meetings, but helping staff to put together topics and agendas that are meaningful to the economic development, you know, body as a whole. So our attendance has never been better, our engagement's been great, and really looking forward to building upon the, building upon all the work that she's done. So Megan, for that, thank you. And then also of her earning her certified economic development status as well. Not many economic developers in the state of California have that, so we are really proud of her achieving that and then being promoted as well. So congratulations on that as well, Megan. So with that, I will get rolling. So for those that don't know, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council is a public-private organization. We are made up of 20 communities and about 45 CEOs, and then seven public sector or civic member organizations. So we were founded in 2015. Citrus Heights was one of our original community members, and we thank you for your ongoing seven years of support. And we represent the region, so we are trying to, how do we advance, grow the regional economy, and brand and increase the reputation of the Greater Sacramento region. And we're doing that because everybody's region is interconnected. So one's community success begets everybody else's success in the region. There we go. So in our region, no more than, really only one or two communities have more than 25% of their economy, you know, where people live and work within their community. So when a new company comes into any community, whether it be Citrus Heights, or Folsom, or Davis, or Yuba City, their people work throughout the region. Their support staff, their suppliers are throughout the region. They're the ones that go out and shop. So that multiplier effect grows and supports the region as a whole. So that's why it's so important to think about your economy on a regional level, not just on an individual level as well. And that is the work that we spend, we are tirelessly doing. We show up, you know, first thing in the morning, excited to do it, and go home tired, and look forward to doing it the next day. So we were founded back in 2015 after the Great Recession. And if you remember the Great Recession, the Greater Sacramento region was the last major economy in California to recover, and one of the last in the country. And we are thrilled to say that we have recovered all the jobs in the region as of May. We were the second economy in California to do that. It's the first time in 20 years, and honestly, it would have been longer, but the Greater Sacramento region didn't really see a downturn in the great, or in the dot-com bust. But when we look at it nationally, when you look at your top 300 MSAs, we were number 13. We were one of the fastest to come out. So that's what we were chartered to do. We are very proud of that, but we can't do that without every individual's support and every community, every business, you know, agreeing that a strong, robust regional economy is what's good for business at the local level. So as we are possibly going into another recession, and that's for other economists to be thinking about, you know, making sure that we've recovered all those jobs is important. Those communities that haven't recovered are going to be in a much worse situation. So, but we're not going to rest on our laurels. We are going to continue to, you know, continue to go and advance. So if I get the next slide, because I'm not making this clicker work. There we go. So over the past seven years, we have attracted close to, or over 10,000 jobs, supporting another 14,000 in the regional economy. So directly impacting over 24,000 jobs either coming in or being supported in the region. 88 companies, and we've got about another five or six looking to close here in the next 90 days. So we're confident that's going to be well over, you know, 100 new companies into the region, you know, by the holiday season. Fiscal impact, meaning the tax dollars flowing to all of our 20 municipal partners, over $130 million, and an economic impact of $8.2 billion that gets stratified again across that entire region. So some of our highlights and some of the things that we focused on, you know, during this calendar year, as we're starting to get back into person. We have had our second-best year in our history, and if we look at kind of our lead generation, our partnership, I would argue this probably was our best year, when you look at both our tangible and tangible, quantitative and qualitative. So over 3,000 jobs, and an average wage of those new jobs of over $140,000. So when you think about the economic multiplier effect of people going to bars, restaurants, brewery, salons, they're going to have that disposable income to be able to do it. So that coming in, you know, coming in through the semiconductor industry, and that's an area where we have a really strong core competency, and we're expecting to see a lot of activity coming here, not only in the next year, but over the next several, especially as the Senate, or the US Congress has recently passed the CHIPS Act. This was another banner year for us. So we have always been striving to be a best-in-class economic development organization. So part of that is having best-in-class partners, but, let me try to go back here. But won three awards. Our talent development won a bronze award, and two of our marketing programs. So Next Out West, talking about all the advantages of living and being in the Greater Sacramento region, both took, one took a bronze and one took a gold. So the IEDC is the one who certified Megan as a top-level economic developer, also said that we're doing top-level stuff. And we're, we know we're going to be adding that trophy case come here in September. So again, everything we try to do is best-in-class, and that's how we prove it is, by making sure that we benchmark ourselves against other communities across the nation, and then prove it by, you know, bringing home the hardware. So as part of what we do to drive our brand reputation, so the first time since 2019, we brought out site selectors. So these individuals are people who, you know, help companies make corporate relocation decisions. They control anywhere between 40% to 50% of the corporate relocation decisions across the country. So, you know, we interface with these individuals greatly. But I told the team I wanted 10, we got nine. We would have had 11, but we had one whose flight surprisingly got canceled, and the other one unfortunately had a passing in the family. But we spent two days educating them on the value proposition of being in the Greater Sacramento region. So in their line of work, there's kind of an old adage of the ABCs, the site selection was anywhere but California, proving that this region is the California option, and that we can take the Pepsi Challenge and provide a very thoughtful and concise way to do business and compare very well against all of our Western counterparts. So Megan moderated our final panel, as you can see here in the bottom left-hand corner, so, and did a great job with our couple, the two that agreed to be on the panel. And the one up there, Laura, said of like, "I've never really, you know, brought up Sacramento or the region to one of my clients, but I'll definitely be doing so now," which is the type of feedback we want to get. The other panel, bringing our workforce groups together, and one of the feedback that I took, took a lot of value was, it's like, it's clearly you individuals actually know each other. I've done these and seen these panels where they're introducing themselves as they sit down, which really goes to the collaborative nature of our region. And then our momentum campaign, so again, as we're always trying to, you know, spread the gospel of the Greater Sacramento region, we rolled this out at our annual celebration and talking about all the great things that are happening in the Greater Sacramento region, from Aggie Square to the CMC, to all the different development opportunities, graduates, et cetera, of how you can be successful in this region. As I close this out here on my last slide, we're going to be focusing not only on the great stuff we've always been doing, but really looking towards our communities, is there looking at thinking about economic development strategy? How do you create win-win, performance-based economic development policies, you know, to fund growth in your community? Supporting small businesses and entrepreneurs as well. So bringing in companies is great, but we also need to be able to provide those same resources to our existing businesses. We meet with about 100 a year. But also, how do we help those companies grow and scale and leverage the resources that are in the region, like the Northern California Innovation District, the Growth Factory, the Carlson Center, et cetera? Equity and upskilling, training workforce, as we all know, you know, spent 12 years in city government, your people are your most important asset, and it's a war for talent out there. How do we help companies, you know, find different pathways to access the best and brightest, and non-traditional pathways to find talent that they weren't looking for? And then finally, too, with a vacancy rate of an industrial area of about 3%, we need to come up with new and innovative ways to repurpose our offices and, you know, bring more buildings online. So when we go after these projects, we've got somewhere to put them. So with that, that is my presentation. Again, we really appreciate all of the support, the time and energy that the team of Citrus Heights has put into the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions?
Okay. So.
Mike.
Hi, Scott. Nice to meet you. So you're speaking my language in a lot of ways. So I cover, for my day job, I cover much of your, the same region that you cover. Probably the biggest thing that I hear from employers is, where do we get people? This is, I mean, the labor pool issue is huge, huge, huge. I could probably fill a couple thousand jobs pretty easily here. So how does our labor pool compare to other regions? Are we in the same boat that they are? Are they, I'm talking about if you were to look at the Bay Area, if you were to look at, say, Fresno, do you have any information on how we compare, how our region from a labor pool standpoint? Are we filling more jobs here in Sacramento region than they are in Fresno, or Stockton, or some of the other areas?
So I'll be honest, we don't, when we benchmark ourselves, we benchmark against communities that are our size or bigger, that are aspirational. So I, you know, nothing against Stockton, they do a great job down there, but when we look at, we benchmark against Denver, Salt Lake City, Phoenix, Portland, Seattle. Our educational attainment is close to on par. Our, you know, we are one of the few communities within the state of California that's actually growing. When the state of California is shrinking by, you know, by a couple hundred thousand, the Greater Sacramento region is growing. From the Bay Area, we're a top-four destination of out migrants coming from the Bay, so we're really the only spot in California, with the exception of the LA Basin, of where they're looking to go as well. So there's a talent shortage. I moved to this region from Wisconsin three years ago. I was in Arizona before that, Michigan and DC as well. So one more state, I get a set of steak knives. But what I can tell you is the entire country is fighting for talent. Those that are winning that balance are those that are importing people, because that's one of the two ways you grow an economy. And how and which do you create different opportunities? So we are partnering with Accenture and the Bay Area Council on the Northern California Apprenticeship Network. So we're helping companies better access different talent pools to find talent and individuals as well. Another thing we offer to some of our smaller, you know, smaller companies is, if you've got a talent shortage, we will help generate a pipeline of individuals. It's still in the beta testing. We are still working out the kinks. Being that it isn't something you could go buy off the shelf, we reverse engineered, which we traditionally do a lot on the data and research side, a couple of different, you know, labor analytics and recruiting tools to be able to support especially some of those smaller, small and midsize businesses that are looking for individuals. So we've piloted with about five companies, so now that I've put it on the public record, I guess it's out there for everybody. But we have seen a little bit of success. We actually backfilled a business development project manager using the same, you know, the same tactics that we're providing these companies. So, you know, we could always use more individuals, and it's never going to be enough, but the individuals are out there, and especially those companies that are willing to say is, just because I've always hired college graduates, always gone to these schools, the ones that are seeing the most success are the ones that are starting to investigate non-traditional ways in which to find talent, mentor talent, grow talent, find that cultural fit, and knowing that you, within reason, I mean, you can't, you know, if you need a CPA, you just can't do that. But by and large, for most other skill sets, if you're willing to take a little more deliberative approach, and there's great examples that we can connect you with as well, that can say is, this is what's worked. And if it's worked for companies like Aon and Accenture and Zenify, it can work for a lot of other companies as well. So that's the mindset, and those are the things that we're thinking about. As Wayne Gretzky, via Michael Scott, said, "As you skate to where the puck's going, not where the puck is." And we're doing the exact same thing when it comes to talent.
Okay. Steve, and then Jeannie?
Thank you, and thank you, Scott, for the presentation. I think Mr. Bruinwood has still been on the first slide.
I have no comment on that.
And I appreciate your thanking us for our support. I want to thank you for your support. Your passion comes through, and we're very excited about redevelopment of the mall property, and so we're going to lean on you.
So Megan and I were talking about that, and I think her next, her next agenda item, I've already, I told her, I was like, you know, assuming it passes, I've already got a couple people of mine that I want to send it to, so.
Perfect. And I was just in Austin, Texas, and saw all the huge development there. They got 220 people a day moving to Austin, Texas. It was 110 degrees, 80% humidity. I don't know why anybody would live there. I was so happy to get back to cool Sacramento.
As somebody that grew up in Southern Arizona, my wife's from Washington State, we kind of joke is, this place is like the best part, you know, is the less oppressive of both. The summers are hot, but the, you know, the nights are nice and easy. The winters are cool, like Seattle, but they're not dark and, you know, six months of gray. So this is, again, I've lived all over the country, this is by far the best climate I've ever lived in. But, you know, part of it is, is creating, you know, and this is something Austin has done very well, is they've created a truly authentic culture. But a lot of the underpinnings, if we were talking about Austin 25, 30 years ago, it was just, hey, great college town?
Yeah.
But nothing else going on. We need to embrace that, you know, UC Davis and Sac State are, you know, putting together, and even one-on-one, have a lot of the same compliments that UT Austin does, but we really need to embrace what it means to be a Sacramentoan, and, you know, as a region, because that's what they've done in Austin as well, of, people in Georgetown aren't saying, "I'm from Georgetown." They're like, "I'm an Austinite." So, but embrace that, making, you know, they've embraced what makes them cool, and we have every opportunity between, you know, our quality of life, or what we call the employee experience here as well.
Yeah, they're very well-branded, but I don't know that I'd want to see that much development that quick.
No, it's, it's one of those, again, it happens, you know, at different paces, at different areas, for different reasons, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Just want to add my gratitude to those that's been expressed already this evening. It's been a great symbiotic relationship, and I remember when you folks first came to town, and there's a lot of questions in those days whether or not this was going to work, and should we make this kind of an investment from our budget, but it has been well worth it and paid off in greater dividends than I ever could have imagined, so thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for the support and taking a chance, because, but, you know, the biggest bets and the biggest chances are the ones that pay off the best. So as we're always looking to grow the economy, you know, we're never going to bet small, so that's something Barry does better than just about anybody I've ever met. We bet, we bet big, and we push all of our We bet, we bet big and we push all of our chips to the center.
All right. If there is no more comments, it was the pleasure of the council.
I'd like to move approval of the funding.
A second.
All right. Motion by Bruins, second by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, suspensions, none? Motion carries.
Thank you for your support. Thank you guys for everything.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next, we have item number seven. The subject is Authorization for Issuance of Infrastructure Financing Strategies, RFP, to Inform the Sunrise Tomorrow Development Plan. And the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to issue an RFP similar, similar to the draft attached to the staff report in your agenda packet.
Good evening again. I am very excited to present this next agenda item. While we get it up and running, I want to acknowledge that this is really the first time our pivotal Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan project has come back before, before city council since its approval in November 2021. So we're going to take the opportunity to use this agenda item to talk about this specific next step and also give a general project update. As council recalls, we set some really big strategic goals on this strategic planning cycle on May 10th, 2022, as it relates to the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan. The first goal was to issue a request for proposals to conduct analysis of various public infrastructure financing scenarios and other economic development tools to inform future development agreement discussions for Sunrise Tomorrow. And the second related goal that has a due date a couple of months past the first is to approach Sunrise Tomorrow property owners about securing right-of-way dedications that allow them to access public financing tools and meet grant eligibility requirements. These are our next steps in the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan catalyzation of development. And they are right on time as we have been creating an action plan since its approval in November 2021. Two big things have happened. The first is the city manager, Ashley Feeney, joined us. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge that his blend of experience and expertise between private and public development has been the exact lens that we've needed to look through to take these next steps and design this action plan. So I, I want to express gratitude for how much work has been done behind the scenes and for the vision and direction that has been cast so that we can continue to move this ball down the field. We have done a really deep assessment on the specific plan, outputs of which you heard in the strategic planning retreat, those strategic goals. And we'll talk about next steps too, as we talk about how to advance those goals. So as you can hear from that strategic plan goal, there's been a definite need identified as we've assessed the site needs of Sunrise Mall, the 100 acre mall, how to get it from its million acre, million square feet of retail and 75 acres of surplus parking to the ultimate mixed-use destination that the specific plan is designed. The next step really comes down to one word, infrastructure. Now, certainly there is water, sewer, storm drainage, power and utility access along Sunrise and Greenback Lane, but the site still requires project-specific infrastructure and an associated funding plan to facilitate eventual infill redevelopment. Now, not only certainly is that a project requirement, but I also would like to underscore, since the plan's approval, myself and our team have spoken with probably, if I had to estimate, no less than 25 to 30 capable, interested developers. And they are extremely excited to hear of the specific plan's approval, because what we've done there is to mitigate political risk and provide certainty in eventual development. As a reminder for folks watching at home, what the specific plan empowers is now a project that aligns with the specific plan vision in order to pull through, needs only a development agreement and project review for expedited approval. So that kind of certainty is practically unprecedented in the development community, especially when you're looking at a mixed-use development that the specific plan empowers. Next up is really mitigating the development risk, the cost and lift associated with creating the new vision, as well as mitigating the financing risk associated with upfront investment so that we can also mitigate against the market risk, making sure we're developing at the right time, taking advantage of the opportunity that hopefully a market will provide. So in summary, next step, infrastructure. Looked at another way, visually, this is what infrastructure currently like, looks like on the site. It is a 100 acre plate of spaghetti. This represents all of the various utilities and infrastructure and really surplus parking. The specific plan requires a transformation into this. So we are organizing the spaghetti into usable, effective and efficient infrastructure, as well as creating a site design that allows for circulation, mobility, connection, and frankly, a really great vibe that people want to hang out in. So we need to figure out what implementation looks like. And the next step to figuring out that implementation is the issuance of an infrastructure financing strategies, RFP, to comprehensively understand two things. First, the options, fiscal and economic benefits, advantages and certainly disadvantages to designating portions of the infrastructure as public to facilitate development. This would facilitate development by opening it up to allow for grant opportunities. Currently, with 100% private designation, it would not currently be eligible for any opportunities. An example would be the federal infrastructure bill, not currently applicable on this site. So what we would need to do in order to ensure eligibility is to open up options should this RFP show ultimate advantage to make it public. Quick note, although we would designate it as public, it would still be privately maintained. The second thing the RFP would do is lay out how to potentially leverage a variety of financing tools and public funding sources to plan and construct this needed infrastructure. So it would essentially give staff an action plan to be able to pull through infrastructure implementation. So the item before you this evening is, does not yet require a resolution. We would ask that you would move to authorize the city manager to issue an RFP substantially similar to the draft that's attached to the staff report. We would then issue the RFP and bring it back before council for, to council for consideration. When we think about funding sources, as we look to issue this RFP, we will be considering all options, including current ownership, as well as interested developer parties and certainly other, other funding sources as well. All of that information would be brought back before you when the RFP is, is ready for consideration. So with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Any questions?
Megan, you mentioned this was for the plan utilities, infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Is, has there been an evaluation done? I know we'll be adding a huge electoral demand increase and, and same with the capacity of the sewer and the water off-site. Have we done an evaluation of that to make sure that we don't have any off-site issues providing this infrastructure to the plan?
You know, I am not the subject matter expert on capacities. It's my general understanding that the specific plan allowed for a top-line analysis.
Sure.
In terms of location.
I just think it'd be a good question to, to ask or at least know about, so there's no major surprises when we go to, you know, connect, plug this all in.
Noted. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So is, is it too simplistic to put it in this picture that the roads that come off, such as things such as the roads that come off Sunrise and go into the mall, would become public roads? Is that what we're looking at? That kind of a, a change in, in the mall property and then other various infrastructure? But would it include things such as the roads that come in and then the road that goes around, or the roadway or path that goes around the mall and then?
Yeah. Great question. When we assess the site needs, the top priority as staff considers how to catalyze development, because it's a, it's a big elephant to eat and we have to find our first bite. And really the first, the first thing we need to do to take that bite is really this, what we're calling the ring road. So we know it as Macy's Plaza Drive, how it circulates all around and what the plan, the illustrative plan in the specific plan envisions is really codifying and designing an official ring road to circulate and add in roundabouts and similar. So we see that as really the, the flagship portion of infrastructure as we're talking about public designation. And then the RFP would lay out past that other considerations.
And then it goes from, we would own it, publicly owned, and, but it would be privately maintained, you said. And are you aware of any other examples that had, have had or have such a relationship that you can point to that?
That's a fantastic question.
Two tonight already, so.
That is a fantastic question. I am not aware, but I would be happy to take on the challenge of finding us a couple.
Yeah, and it wasn't meant to put you on the spot at all, Megan. It was meant to, a little bit of concern over, are there any problems with that relationship? Because I could see how that could happen, but hopefully it wouldn't. And then if I understood you correctly, you basically said the, the inner ring road. So the area or the roadway immediately around the mall structure now?
On the, on the perimeter. So I would, I would consider it the outer ring road. So not close to the current existing mall building, but more along the perimeter.
Okay. Okay, okay. And then that just, and the main reason for that is it opens up then our ability to get funding that we would not otherwise, or they would not be able to otherwise do and moving the mall forward, property forward.
Exactly right. Exactly right. And to add to the visual of the outer ring road, if you recall, the project in the specific plan is, is really broken down into four phases, short-term to long-term. And the first phase, really the, the lowest hanging fruit for potential development is the outer perimeter. So if we're going to visualize what that looks like, that's a lot of that multifamily development on the south and southeast portion of the mall, which is why that ring road is so important as well, to be able to give adequate access.
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Megan. A great, it's, it's my understanding, number one, that this RFP is to answer these questions, really.
Absolutely.
That's what we, that's what we're doing.
They're big questions.
We're answering, what's the feasibility of, what's the best plan? Like you said, what's the best bite to take?
Mm-hmm.
And to address council member Daniels' example, I believe there's a downtown Denver mall that had a similar redevelopment that, that's already been done. So just a suggestion that might be something to look at. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to double check the city attorney. We need a motion for this?
Yes, we do. And what we're looking for is an oral motion, just saying words similar to what's on the screen would be great.
Okay. Pleasure of the council.
So I move that we authorize the issuance of an RFP for infrastructure financing strategies to inform the Sunrise Tomorrow development plan.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspensions, motion carries. Next item, please.
Next item, we have public hearing, item number eight. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts 9801, 9802, and O301 levy of fiscal year 2022, 2023 assessments. And the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and approve all associated resolutions.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and City Manager Feeney. I am Regina Cave, the General Services Director. And this first item is one of several agenda items regarding the levying of the 2022, 2023 assessments for various assessment districts that we have here in Citrus Heights. In accordance with the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, each year, staff must update the assessments of each of the respective assessment districts before any levying can take place. At the last council meeting held on July 14th, city council authorized staff to initiate proceedings and set this evening as the public hearing. So this item before you is the final step required in setting the assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023. So staff's recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, receive any public comments, and then take action to confirm the diagrams and assessments to levy fiscal year 2223 for districts 9801, 9802, and O301. And then before I pull it up on the screen, additionally, and in transparency, the assessments for some of the districts such as O301, Zones 1 and Zones 2 may be adjusted down by about one penny per assessment or per parcel, just to make sure that we are maintaining compliance with Set County's requirement in terms of not being able to assess a per parcel with an odd number. So for instance, it, it would be $3.02 versus $3.03. So very nominal and in favor of the, of the property owner. So with that, I will kick this back to the mayor to open public comment.
All right. This is a public hearing. Any comments? Saying none, I'll close said hearing. Any comments from council? Saying none. Come on, it's a marathon, folks.
Okay. You ready for a motion?
Ready.
I move that we pass a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2223 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9801.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just point out we didn't get a second on that?
Oh. Would you like to be my second, please?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Here we go. Let the record show Brett's a second. I look, I said, well, now it's a sprint now.
He's pulling it back.
Okay. Let's do this again. All those in favor?
Wait, wait. Do we have a second?
I didn't, I didn't, I said no on the second.
I'll be the second.
Only because I vote no on it. It's kind of silly to.
Okay. All right.
Motion by Miller, second by Schaefer.
Thank you. There we go. I'm all flustered now. Third try is the charm, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Duly noted, Mr. Daniels.
Okay. And I'd also like to make a motion that we confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2223 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9802.
Second. Okay. Yeah, wait at that time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. I mean, no.
You sure?
Yep.
Got it. All right. Brett to no.
And finally, for this one, I move that we confirm the diagram and assessment and levy fiscal year 2223 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 301.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Daniels?
No.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
That's it. Next one.
Okay. Next, we have public hearing, item number nine. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4, levy of fiscal year 2022 and 2023 assessments. And the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and approve the resolution.
Okay. This is a public hearing?
Good evening again.
Oh. We have to do this again?
I apologize. So similar to the previous item, in accordance with Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, we must also do the updates for this district as well. Meeting that was held on July 14th, city council authorized us to initiate proceedings and set tonight as the public hearing. So this item before you is the final step in setting the assessments for fiscal year 2223. Staff recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, receive any comments, and then take action to confirm the diagrams and assessments to levy fiscal years 2223 for District 9701.
May I make a quick comment before you open the public hearing?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify for the audience that, that sometimes we handle these public hearings very quickly.
hearings very quickly. But just so that we understand what the subject of this public hearing is, it is item nine. So when we open the public hearing, we are speaking, speaking specifically to item nine. So if you have any public comment on that, this is the time.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Item nine, public hearing is open. Any comments? Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hey, I'm Deborah Woolley. I've been in the city for 33 years. I was wondering, on this assessment, is there any increase from last year? And who does it affect?
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so for this particular one, for 9701 Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4, these do not, are not proposed to increase. These are older assessments that are subject to Prop 218 and require vote of the property owners. Unlike the Zones 9801, 9802, and O301, those assessment districts were created and adopted post-incorporation and have mechanisms in place to adjust on an annual basis in accordance with council's approval, but up to 4% per year for inflation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the.
Yours is not going up.
Okay, any other comment? Seeing none, I'll close said hearing.
I move that we approve a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2223 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 9701, Zones 1 through 4.
Motion by Bruins?
Second.
Second by Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Duly noted.
Next, we have public hearing, item number 10. The subject is Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District levy of fiscal year 2022, 2023 assessments. And the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and approve the resolution.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, council. Leslie Blumequist with the Department of General Services. This item is very similar to the previous two that were just before you. Each year, we are required to update the assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting District in compliance with the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. At your last meeting, you took the first step in this process by adopting two resolutions, the first to initiate proceedings, including scheduling the public hearing for tonight. The second resolution set forth the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2223. The lighting district includes all parcels in the city of Citrus Heights and funds all the streetlights and safety lights throughout the city, of which there are about 4,800. It's important to note that there are no changes recommended for the assessments as proposed for next fiscal year. This evening, staff recommends two actions regarding the lighting district. The first is to hold the public hearing regarding the proposed assessment and receive any public comment. And once the hearing is closed, the second item is to adopt a resolution confirming the diagram of the assessment and to levy fiscal year 2223 assessments.
Okay.
It's a question, is there a change in the assessment this year?
There is not, as the same as last year.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I will open said hearing for item number 10. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Any council comment?
I move that we adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 2223 assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting District.
Motion by Daniels?
Second.
Second by Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
Next, we have department reports, item number 11. The subject is school safety update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Alex Turcot, your police chief. And we're here to discuss a little bit, update, high level in brief, on school safety. So at a previous council meeting, council had asked that staff take a look at our current school safety plans, work with our internal staff and as well with our local Safe Schools director to ensure that we had the best plans in place to be able to protect the children of Citrus Heights. We are still in ongoing works with that, but I want to provide a little bit of a update to let you know where we are and, and where we're going. So before we begin, I'll start off by saying that since its inception, Citrus Heights Police Department has been dedicated to the life safety of our residents, especially our children. We have, we are blessed with some of the most professional and courageous police professionals that I'm aware of in the industry. Now, I'm biased, but I've seen them perform. And we, we have officers that are really dedicated to not only providing great customer service on day-to-day calls, but have the courage to take on the worst offenders in our community to protect the life of our residents and especially our children. So as it relates to school safety, prior to this year, our, our department has already had specific threat assessments and school safety response plans that have been drafted for every school, both elementary and high school within our jurisdiction. We're here specifically talking about schools, but we take a proactive look at any major venue in our jurisdiction. And we develop plans and threat assessments and training protocols to be able to do any type of law enforcement response. And where specifically with, with what we're talking about tonight, active homicide tends to be that most severe of responses. And so I will tell you, California law enforcement has been at the forefront of innovation and best practices to be able to mitigate the impact of an active homicide incident. Here in our region, working with our regional partners, I also believe that we're one of the most highly trained regions in that response. And then, of course, again, I'm a little slanted towards Citrus Heights, but I would put us up against anybody in the world as far as our dedication and our training here. So with our safety plans that were already in place, given recent events, it's always a good idea to dust those off and take a look at them. So we reviewed and updated each one of those plans and put fresh plans in all of our supervisor patrol vehicles, our communication center, and the like. Won't go too detailed into how those plans are here tonight. But I'll tell you, mostly the refreshing was just updating phone numbers and some other ideals. But currently, our staff have the ability to have a full comprehensive template plan to be able to respond to any emergency at our, at our local schools. We've been working closely with Mike Jones, who is the Safe Schools Director. They are doing a comprehensive review of their current safety plans as well. So while ours are response to the schools, they also include, theirs also include training for staff, protocols, and the like. So again, we believe that they have good systems in place. We have exercised those systems, but it's always good to take another look. So they're doing a deep dive into each one of those plans, and they plan to have that ready in the fall for us to review, at least for our school, our school sites. Just to talk a little bit more about our collaboration with Safe Schools, so again, active homicide tends to be the headline that we're looking at, but there's much more that can occur at schools that would necessitate lockdowns or responses. Separate from response, we also take a proactive approach. So we will work with Safe Schools whenever there's a credible threat or information that leads us to believe that there may be an incident that might occur. We have investigated several of those and along with Safe Schools have taken action where the threat has been deemed credible. There is a difference, and it's, from a layman's standpoint, anytime there's an issue at the school where they lock the doors, people think that it's a lockdown for Safe Schools and for law enforcement. There is a difference between a shelter in place and a lockdown. A shelter in place, just to kind of give us a lay of the land. Anytime anything around the peripheral of the school may bleed over into the school, say that there's a vehicle pursued in the area, or there's somebody being pursued around a location of a school, they'll do a shelter in place, which would be, school will continue, but they'll just make sure the doors are locked and they'll let the, let the students and teachers, well, they'll let the teachers know and staff that something's occurring, and they'll just stay inside until it's been clear. A lockdown, on the other hand, is the full spectrum, everybody get on the floor. It's what we used to do as stop, drop, and roll for earthquakes and fires, and well, they don't roll anymore, I guess. But if you might remember earthquake drills, or even before that, maybe some carpet bombing drills from the old days, similar to that, our, our children unfortunately have to do lockdown drills. But they do exercise those, those drills. In the past five years, while there have been numerous shelter in places for various incidents, happily, we've only really had to have two significant lockdowns. Citrus Heights PD's personally handled those lockdowns in conjunction with Safe Schools. As part of our review here, we did take a look at that data just to ensure the timeliness of the response, and I am, I am pleased with that response. And frankly, I was firsthand visual on most of those things already anyway. So looking like we're, we're doing good there. As you're well aware, we are bringing a lot of new officers onto the team right now. And so while we have trained and continue to train, it is a priority as new officers get on to train for active homicide situations. So we do, in our training plan, we'll, we will stand up another full-scale exercise, you know, the full reality with actors and things like that, that'll come a little later in the fiscal year. But for just in time training to get some of that, get our staff trained up to that, that level, we are utilizing our firearm simulator, which I believe council's had a tour of that, and if you haven't, call me and I'll, I'll, I'll take you through it. But that does have the ability there to also simulate multi-officer response to an active homicide. So we're doing that refresher training as officers come on, giving that initial training, refresher training for the veterans, and working that through. Past that, we'll, much like anything else, as these incidents occur, we'll continue to monitor. So the recent ones that we've had, we get after-action reports and case studies from the governing bodies that look at those cases. We've reviewed those from the recent couple that we've had and are confident that our plan that's in place and the training that we have would mitigate the issues that were brought up in those after actions. So continued conversation. We will report back when we hear more from Safe Schools, but at this point, I'm fairly confident that we're on a good track. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, when you talk active homicide training, that, that includes not only our schools, but public spaces and such?
So pretty much any venue or multiple people could be involved in a homicide event that would denote that. So that's really the two factors, is suspect's ability to do harm and a lot of people in a certain space, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Great. That's really good to hear that we're being proactive. Certainly, we learned from Uvalde that it can happen anywhere. Uvalde is a very small town, a long ways from any real serious metropolitan center. So it just really does emphasize the fact that this really could happen anywhere. So one of the things that when we look at the, at sort of the, the stuff that happened prior to that particular shooter in Uval, in Uvalde, and I understand you can't look at that particular shooter and change history. It happened, this is the way it went, but there were incidents that, that occurred that didn't reach the deemed credible piece until after the incident occurred. At the time where he was arrested, or he was, some knives were removed from, from his possession. And this, again, this is hearsay, I'm not firsthand knowledge of that, but these are things that, while I don't, I'm not looking for an answer to this question, I'm simply saying, what is a credible threat? What is, and, and I think we need to really start looking at, from a, a fresh perspective, what is a credible threat? Because it seems as though, we've, we've seen this multiple times, where there were some flags that got on Norton along the way. And so I'm trying to say is, do we have a, do we have a, a red flag? Do we have a purple flag? Do we have a yellow flag? What are these things that add up that, that could potentially point to, to somebody turning into this type of incident before it happens? And, and of course, if it never happens, then it's, it's kind of a, you can chase your tail all day long on, on if it doesn't happen and you really did, but ultimately, we certainly want the credible threat to be examined very closely so that we can potentially prevent this type of event from happening. So, and unfortunately, that we're seeing statistically, these, the number of these events is increasing instead of decreasing. So I think that we have to look at all examples in order to, in order to turn the tide and, and start to, start over time, seeing these, fewer of these, these incidents happening. So that's, that's my only comment. But I, I'm incredibly proud of what you do and the training that you do. And I, I do think that we are, at least in my estimation, very professional and very well-trained. And so I think that we have to look at things from a different perspective in order to really get a handle on some of these incidents.
Thank you for your comments, Vice Mayor. I, I know, Chief, that it's hard to determine what is credible and what is not credible, but I do have absolute faith, that faith as most of us on this council do, that your, your team is constantly looking at that and evolving. And I wouldn't want you to like, to talk about what credible threats are on camera so that like, you know, bad guys can start thinking about it and figuring out the ways to get around it.
Yeah, well, I, there isn't, the generalities for that is not that secret. So I mean, I think it's easy to share. I mean, when we're talking, some, some of what you were speaking to, Mr. Schaefer, is kind of the holistic approach of how we prevent these things from happening, right? And that can do anything from police response, but it could also have to do with citizenship programs in schools and anti-bullying and those type of things. So there is a, a good focus on this within the spectrum, to be able to try to make these things better as we go. As far as credible threat goes, simply that is, making a threat, it seems like you could do something to back up your threat, right? And that's just a standard, a standard legal definition there. So we do look at those, we only have the tools that we have. But where life safety is concerned, especially with our children, we tend to go on the proactive end of that and try to ensure safety. And frankly, if there isn't a criminal credible threat, but maybe there's some counseling or other programs we can do to insert change in that behavior, those are options are all on the table. Because really, at the end of the day, it's the, the safety of our children that's number one, and procedure and other things, take a backseat, frankly, to trying to prevent those. And we've seen it time and time again, you can never prevent all tragedies from occurring, but you should learn and grow and continue to plan, for sure. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have some.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief. I truly appreciate you, you know, coming forward and giving us this presentation. I think it's extremely important also for the public to hear these things, definitely. I would have liked to have heard a little bit more about, the, the district has planned on using some funds, has, have dedicated some funds, I believe, to hardening some of the schools. And, and if, if we can maybe get some of that information back, if, once they have something, it would be great to hear that. I, I do know that many, if not most of our schools in the Citrus Heights area have layers of protection, which are extremely important, but they certainly don't in all of them. And, and I think that it's concerning that we're going to wait for the school district to maybe fix that, that issue. That, that's a, that's a real concern. And then along with that money that the district has dedicated, I thought in the recent past that the federal government had made some comments about pushing some funds into that area from the federal level. Do you have anything on that?
I know that there is some funding that's being discussed. As this is a preliminary report, I wanted to let you know what your police department is doing quickly to make sure that we're, we're up to par. But our intention is to return in front of council with Safe Schools, so they can give a presentation on some of those items and how and where they would use their funding and other funding that we may identify. We'll make sure we include that into the next presentation.
Thank you. And then finally, you know, it's, it's not anything new, you know? It's, it's decades this has been going on. It's sad that it seems to be more frequent and whatnot. And plans are wonderful, and I, I have no doubt that you have the best plans to respond, but plans are reactive for the most part. And I think we've just seen enough to where we need to be pushing towards the proactive. And for me, that's an officer in each school. And I'm hoping that we could perhaps get that into our discussion mode possibly soon to, as to what that might look like, the feasibility of it, and what that would take from this city if we decided to do that for the schools in our district, excuse me, the schools in our city.
I understand. Currently, with the resources we have here, being able to respond to anywhere to an active homicide is taking, is, has the priority of our deployment, but there's always room to grow and to discuss for the future. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. No questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Next item, please.
Next, we have city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Ashley Feeny, your city manager. My only item tonight is I'm really looking forward to National Night Out and connecting with all the residents at the neighborhood event. So look forward to seeing everybody there. And thank you to our staff team for all their work tonight.
Okay.
A little advice, personal advice. What was it? Just watch your hot dog intake, you know? Don't overdo it.
You can't eat it every time.
It can creep up on you. Yeah, experience.
So don't try to turn into Joey Chestnut? All right. I'm going to take that advice. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Next, we have items requested by council members and future agenda items.
Anything? Okay, next item.
Next, we have closed session, item number 12, Conference with Real Property Negotiators.
Okay.
Not virtual.
Not virtual? No. All right, so we will step aside for a closed session.